Ladies and gentlemen, after confirming that we do have a quorum of one hundred and twenty-six voters, in pursuant to a vote of the Board of Selectmen, without hearing any objection, I will waive the reading of the warrant and the constable's return, but I'd like to call the special town meeting in the annual town meeting of April fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, to order. Warrants have been posted, notices have been delivered by the town bylaws. At this time, I would like to have the pledge of allegiance, if you could all please rise. Please join me in our pledge of allegiance. I-
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite the chairperson of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Kevin DiMazzio, to please step forward for the annual dedication of our town report and for a moment of silence. Mr. DiMazzio.
Thank you. This year's town report is dedicated to the health personnel who worked so tirelessly and professionally for our town of Abington. The dedication is intended to publicly and permanently thank our public health nurse, Lindsay Wright, for all of her time, effort, and expertise that she has provided to keep our residents informed on all the aspects of COVID-19 and the vaccination process. The dedication of our town report is also intended to thank our personnel, our health personnel at our schools, for their efforts to keep our students and their families safe. Those talented employees include Dr. Carol Smith, Nurse Deborah Ambrose, Nurse Renee Brown, Nurse Donna Conso, Nurse Sarah LaPointe, and Nurse Joan Smith. We also extend many thanks to Alicia Reed, our professional athletic trainer at the Abington High School, for her assistance with COVID-19 testing, as well as her tireless efforts to protect the health and the well-being of our student athletes as they navigate their sports seasons throughout the pandemic. Finally, I would be remiss if our town didn't also publicly thank our former health agent, Marty Go Lightly, who patiently and professionally led our health department and guided our residents through very difficult and trying times. We are proud to document our appreciation for all these healthcare professionals by dedicating this year's town report in their names and submitting this report into the permanent historical records of our town. Please join me in a round of applause for these deserving town employees.
Please rise for a moment of silence.
It's a list of deceased town employees. Please remain standing as we honor these town employees and volunteers who passed on to a greater world during the year of two thousand and twenty-one. Dr. John J. Ahern, John Jack Brown, Teresa Burgess, Norma J. Clark, Robert Hammond, Nancy Kavanaugh, Diane L. Keith, Louis D. Kelly, Jean E. Kemp, Nancy Monahan, and Michael Thank you. You can please be seated.
As we reflect and remember those town employees who we have lost, let us also pause to be mindful of those families who have suffered losses as a result of the ongoing pandemic. We keep in our hearts all whom we have lost and continue to mourn, our neighbors and friends with lingering medical and mental health concerns who seek our support, our loved ones who have suffered and continue to suffer. And we continue to also give thanks to our resident nurses, doctors, police, fire, and EMTs, to our senior center and Meals on Wheels volunteers, to our schoolteachers, grocery store, and other frontline workers, and to our parents and caregivers who adapted and persevered, and to all who continue to share love, kindness, and compassion. Throughout the past many months, there have been many honorable and unselfish acts of Abington residents exemplifying respect and kindness for caring for one another, all of which strengthen the unity of our community. Please join me in yet another round of applause as we, as an expression of our thanks and appreciation for our fellow residents. We are proud to live in our wonderful hometown of Abington. Thank you. All right. Welcome to the special town meeting and our annual town meeting of April fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. My name is Sean Riley, and I am the town moderator. Town meetings have been held here in Abington since the early seventeen hundreds. Historians have described an open town meeting as one of the purest examples of democracy, where resident voters are welcome to gather together as a legislative body, to exchange ideas and different points of view, to approve town bylaws and budgets, and to vote with their heart and conscience in the best interests of their family and their town. Whether this is your first time attending a town meeting, or if you are a regular attendee, we welcome you and we thank you for your participation. We'll be using some of the available technology that is built into this auditorium and shall try to display each article as we address them. However, please note that the printed warrant is the official warrant and contains the articles, so if there are any discrepancies between the content in your warrant and that which might appear on the screen, the language in the warrant or in the stated motion will control unless otherwise stated. Please allow me to introduce our town clerk, Ms. Lee Anne Adams, who's sitting to my right, our town councilman, Mr. Greg Corbo, who's sitting down below in front of me from KP Law. Seated to my left are members of the Abington Finance Committee. The Finance Committee is comprised of Abington residents who volunteer to review and analyze each article, which is to be voted on at our town meeting. Finance Committee Chairman Matt Sala will be speaking to you throughout tonight's meetings and will later introduce the members of the Finance Committee. I'd also like to welcome our town manager, Scott Lambiace, who was also sitting in front of me. Mr. Lambiace and our town employees have worked very hard to prepare for this town meeting, and Mr. Lambiace will later be taking part in the presentation of some articles and will answer any relative questions. At this time, I'd like to put the annual town meeting into recess. We'll be ready to proceed with the special town meeting. First, let me briefly review the rules of town meeting. We ask that you abide by these following rules and guidelines during town meeting in order to allow you the opportunity to ask questions, share your opinions, or simply listen to debate. Please raise your hand if you'd like to speak, and the moderator will recognize you at the earliest available moment. In order to maintain social distance, an usher will bring a wireless microphone to you, so you will not need to leave your seat area. Please state your name and address before you begin speaking, so that our town clerk can properly record the minutes of this town meeting. Please make sure to keep all comments and questions relevant only to the subject matter of the article being discussed, and we do not make any personal attacks or bring personalities into debating of any issue. If the moderator believes that a speaker is straying from the issues, I will have to direct the speaker to limit his or her portion of the debate to that issue. We also ask that all speakers limit their time at the microphone, so others will have an opportunity to speak and be heard. I understand that many of you have children at home or other people in your life who you may need to keep in contact with during some point in the evening. We ask that you please silence your cellphones at this time and that you take any phone conversations out to the lobby in consideration for those who may be sitting near you. In case of evacuation, I've been asked to remind you, and in case emergency arises, we need to evacuate the building, please note there are various emergency exits which may be available to you. There are exits located on the left and right of the middle of the auditorium. There's also emergency exits up on the top back of the auditorium, and also here in the front at the left and right sides of the auditorium. I have appointed four ushers who are going to help us with any counts, if we have any standing counts tonight. If I could clarify, Mr. Chris Nagel, when the time comes, or if the time comes, if you could count this front left and the members of the Finance Committee. Mrs. Kathleen Riley would do the front center and the Board of Selectmen up front here. Ms. Terry Mays, if you could count those in the front right quadrant. And Rich Smith, I'm going to ask you if you could count everyone up on the top, middle, and left. Anyone who's sitting right in front of me in this right quadrant, those are for non-voters only. If you are a voter, you're going to need to shift over if you'd like your vote to be counted. I also need to appoint a deputy moderator for this coming year, and I ask that you now vote to approve the appointment of former moderator, Michael Frainey, as our deputy moderator. Throughout this evening, I'll be asking all those in favor to signify by saying aye, and then I'll ask all those who are opposed to signify by saying no. So we'll try this first vote as an example. All those in favor of appointing Michael Frainey as our deputy moderator, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying no. The ayes have it. It was almost unanimous. A family member, probably, Michael, sorry. Please understand, in order to debate or discuss an item at tonight's town meeting, the subject matter must be listed in the warrant in the form of an article. Tonight, the Finance Committee and others will be presenting their motions to either approve an article as it's originally presented, or to propose new wording with updated information, or to oppose an article, which we call passing over an article. If you have any questions about procedure or how to do something, please feel free to ask the moderator. We will do our best to make sure that we all understand what we're voting on before we actually ask you to declare your vote. Before we proceed to Article One of the special town meeting, is there anything else that I haven't addressed that needs to be taken care of? All right. Then, everyone should have picked up the handout that was available inside the door that has the special town meeting warrant at the top. It's a staple thing. The first two pages of the special town meeting, followed by the warrant for the annual town meeting. The budget is attached to the rear of that handout, and there's also a separate handout with a copy of the zoning map. If you haven't yet picked it up, they're available to you right inside the entrance to the auditorium. Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right. If we could then start with our special town meeting, Article One. Article One is to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of five hundred and eighty thousand dollars from free cash to cover the FY twenty-two snow and ice deficit, take any other action relative thereto. The moderator recognizes the Finance Chairman, Matt Sala, for a motion.
Matt Sala, twenty-five, George Gillespie Way. The Finance Committee moves to approve Article One as printed in the warrant.
Finance Committee makes a motion to approve Article One as printed in the warrant. Are there any questions or anything to be heard about Article One? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. We expect that some of these articles in this special are going to go relatively quickly. I'm not trying to rush anybody, but they're relatively straightforward articles. Article Two, Enterprise Fund Budget Revision, to see if the town will vote to correct the FY twenty-two budgets in the Cable Access Enterprise Fund and the Gulf Enterprise Fund as presented. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article Two as printed in the warrant.
Finance Committee makes a motion to approve Article Two. Are there any questions or anything to be heard in Article Two? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article Three, Community Preservation, Funding for the Restoration of the Et Cetera, which is the flagpole rotary you all drove by on Glenwood Way when you came here. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article Three as printed in the warrant.
Finance Committee makes a motion to approve. Any questions or comments on Article Three? Is there a question? No? Matt, you need to talk into the mic a little deeper.
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article Three as printed in the warrant.
Thank you for letting us know. Thank you, Matt. Anything to be heard in Article Three? If not, all those in favor of approving Article Three as proposed, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article Four, the Community Preservation FY twenty-two Budget, to see if the town will vote to amend the FY twenty-two conservation, sorry, Community Preservation Budget as voted pursuant to Article eleven in the May twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-one annual town meeting as shown below. Will take any other action there? Two, Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article Four as printed in the warrant.
Finance Committee makes a motion to approve Article Four. Anything to be heard in Article Four? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article Five, Payment of a Prior Year's Bill, to see if the town will vote to transfer four hundred and thirty-eight dollars from hazardous waste disposal budget appropriation to pay an outstanding bill, and two hundred and forty-eight dollars and ninety-one cents from the Sealer of Weights and Measures expense line to pay an outstanding bill from a prior year. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article Five as printed in the warrant.
Finance Committee makes a motion to approve. Any questions on Article Five? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. Moderator clears that it is unanimous. Article Six, the New Fire Station Design, to see if the town will vote to amend the vote taken in Article twelve at May twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-one annual town meeting to change the purpose of the appropriation but not the amount to include engineering, design, and project management costs for a new DPW facility as part of the engineering, design, and project management for the cost of a new fire station on the same site. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article Six as printed in the warrant.
Finance Committee makes a motion to approve. Anything to be heard? Any questions on Article Six? There's a question back there. Mr. Ryan, if you can get a microphone. Mr. Ryan, state your name and address, sir.
Beau Ryan, one-one-eight McKinley Drive. So, sorry, I've been a little out of touch. The adding a DPW facility to the fire station, is it going to be a joint building? Is that what I'm understanding here?
Mr. Sala, you want to take the first shot at that?
First shot is, the article is to, or the article that we passed last year that we're looking to amend was, sorry. The article we were looking to, the article that was passed last year that we're looking to amend was to do planning and design work for a potential new fire station. This is to add the DPW and the location of the DPW facility on Center Street to the potential design to look to see if we would do both there at that same property.
Central Street was the correct street. It was just a typo in Matt's brain. Central Street, where the existing DPW facility is. This would allow the Fire Station Study Committee to examine that site as potential combination, new fire station, new DPW site.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on this Article Six? If not, all those in favor of approving Article Six as moved by the Finance Committee, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article Seven, Paid Leave Buyback, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of twenty-one thousand six hundred and eleven dollars from the health insurance line item for the purchase of paid leave buyback for one retiring employee. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article Seven as printed in the warrant.
Finance Committee makes a motion to approve. Anything to be heard in Article Seven? If not, all those in favor approving Article Seven, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article Eight, Sewer Force Main Design and Engineering, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of four hundred and fifty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty-four cents from sewer receipts reserved to pay the cost of design and engineering, phase of the sewer force, main project, and anything incidental related thereto. Mr. Sala.
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article Eight as printed in the warrant.
Finance Committee makes a motion to approve. Anything to be heard on Article Eight? If not, all those in favor approving Article Eight, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Thank you. That concludes the warrant articles on our special town meeting, and we'll get ready to set up for our annual town meeting. I would like to declare the special town meeting of April fourth to be adjourned, and I would now like to take the annual town meeting out of recess, the hour being past seven-ten in the evening, and having more than the minimum quorum present. Before we get started with our eighteen articles, we have a summary and presentation from our town manager, Scott Lambiace, and following him will be Matt Sala, our Finance Committee Chairman. I'd like to introduce Scott Lambiace.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you all for coming out tonight. It's great to see, you know, that so many people are here and helping us conduct our business. And, you know, I want to thank all the people who worked on this, all of our department heads that are here, our Finance Committee, you know, the school department. There was a lot of people who go into putting this town meeting together and getting us prepared and getting us to this point, so it's a lot of work and a lot of moving parts. So thank you all for helping us, and again, thank you all for being out here. I'd also like to thank our State Representative Allison Sullivan and our State Senator John Keenan for all this support. Many of the projects that we're currently working on include earmark money and grant money, some of the things that I'll talk about briefly. It wouldn't be possible for us to be able to do a lot of these things without the dedication from them and their hard-working staff members, so thank you. It is appreciated. Tonight, we're going to present a budget to you that provides for some enhanced services. These services include an additional full-time laborer for the Department of Public Works. It's a desperately needed position over there. You know, they do quite a bit for the town, and, you know, they have a lot of fields and a lot of areas to maintain. We have an additional part-time staff member for our accounting department, some increased working hours for employees at the Council of Aging. We have some increased hours for our assistant town planner, who also works on getting most of the grants that we need and use for a lot of these projects that we're on. We have increased staffing at the police department. We have some additional part-time position, or an additional part-time position to add to our veteran services officer. And again, that's a place that we, you know, desperately need some help, and the folks that we service through that department are the ones that we really want to be able to help. We have an additional part-time children's librarian also. Some other drivers to this budget this year include increases to waste hauling expenses, as well as increases to our health insurance and liability expenses. Our liability and health insurance are expenses that we're currently working and reviewing and we're getting and seeking quotes for, so we're hoping to reduce those costs. Waste hauling, that's a different story. That's an expense that just continues to vex us year after year. You know, until such time as the recycling market turns around and we can actually reap some benefit for the recycling, we're just going to see increases of, you know, five to eight percent, if not more. This fall, I'm going to ask the Selectmen to form a citizens committee to review that situation and look at ways that we can reduce our tonnage and maybe increase our ability to benefit from the recyclables that are paying a dividend. As these uncontrollable expenses do rise, we do a look for additional non-tax sources of revenue to help us and provide the services that you're accustomed to. One of the sources that we have is finally being realized is the tax and impact fee that we receive on marijuana establishments. At this time, we only have one shop out of five that are licensed that is actually open, but we're experiencing approximately a three hundred thousand dollar increase to our revenue. We fully anticipate that we'll see at least one or two more of these facilities open in the next fiscal year, but this new revenue will go a long way towards easing the burden of our ever-increasing waste hauling expenses. And again, there are other things that we look at. There's other services that the different departments need that we could provide. So again, the ability to find newfound revenue without it being a tax, a fee, or a fine doesn't come very often, so we're glad that, you know, that these are working out. Now, I'd like to take a quick moment, and it won't be long, just to tell you about a few of the projects that we're working on over the past year. We've updated our town website and our department webpages, so encourage all of you to take a look, go online, see what you think. We still have some bugs to work out, but I think you're going to find it, it's a much better user experience, and we're doing our best to keep it updated and keep all the information out there that we know that you're looking for. Additionally, we've been working hard to have a more prominent social media presence. We're collaborating with a consultant, and this consultant was funded by a grant, to create quarterly newsletters that provide updated topical information, financial information, community information. Additionally, as part of that project, we're putting out surveys and trying to get some feedback, as much feedback as possible. So if you do see them, you know, please participate. You'll see there'll be links for you to get on our email database if you're not already in there. On your way out tonight, you're going to be given some gift bags, swag bags. They contain some important information. They contain some important information. There's a COVID test kit in there, I believe, one for everybody, a copy of the annual report is in there. But you also see some information in there. There's some information on what the Affordable Housing Trust has been working on. They've been collaborating with the consultant, actually two consultants, and both of these consultants were provided through either an earmark or through grant money. So what we're working on is looking at a possible reuse, or if we want to do a reuse of the Center School building. You'll see within that gift bag, there is a, there's a flyer on that that contains a QR code, and if you scan that QR code, that's going to bring you to a link for a survey, and it'll also give you the ability to sign up for a Zoom meeting that's going to be held on April twenty-seventh. And that's going to be just sort of a community meeting to discuss what you would like to see or what your thoughts are on the reuse specifically of the Center School. You'll also find there's a QR code in there and a survey from the Charter Review Committee. You know, again, they're looking for feedback, so hopefully you'll all be able to participate. I'm also happy to report that the Open Space Committee, along with the Recreation Committee and the Board of Selectmen, have actively been working on the Open Space Plan. We were just notified last week that we've been given the initial go-ahead to apply for a grant. It looks like we have a very good shot, and this grant will provide the funds for a consultant to assist us in the assist the Open Space and Recreation Committee with the update of that plan, and that's a crucial step in being eligible for other grants to assist the committee in their mission. So one last thing I'd like to mention is just that the Collins Center is currently working with myself and the department heads. We're creating a long-term, comprehensive capital plan. Mrs. is going to provide the Finance Committee with the valuable tool that will assist us in funding our capital needs going forward. I expect that this plan will be ready to be implemented for the next town meeting. And just to mention that this is yet another project that we've been able to do with grant money. So with that, I will turn it over to the moderator. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lambiace. I may have gone out of order, so I'm going to go back to Matt Sala, the Finance Committee Chairman, for brief words.
Hi, everyone. Hopefully, this will be a little bit louder and a little bit better. Just a quick moment of introduction. The Finance Committee is a committee of nine residents of Abington who volunteer their time. We volunteer our time. We meet quite extensively throughout the budget process to go over the budget and then any other articles that come before everyone here at town meeting. I would like to thank the other members of the committee who are here with me tonight, sitting mostly to my left, one in the audience, one who couldn't make it tonight. We have Barbara Ray, our vice chair, Greg Belizarian, Chris Murphy, Russ Fuller, Paul Haggerty, Daniel Eddy. In the audience, we have Andrew Leveralt, and not able to be with us tonight, Joe Rojas. Also not able to be with us tonight is our board recording secretary, Deb Libby, and I think I just found the sweet spot for the microphone. So my apologies if anyone can't hear me. So I'd like to thank all of them for the time that they put in and let everyone here know that the board does have fairly regular openings, and you can, if you so desire to spend some time and serve the town a bit, you can inquire with our moderator, Sean Riley, when there are openings about whether or not you can be appointed to the board. It was about ten years ago that I was sitting here, not in this building, but here at town meeting and thinking the same thing, and have been on the committee since, so appreciate all of your time and effort and your time here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Sala. Please, well-deserved. Thank you to the members of the Finance Committee, again, all volunteer residents who spent a lot of time going through each and every part of the town meeting to prepare for this evening. All right, we can now proceed with Article One of our annual town meeting. Again, it is, will be on page three of the handout you may have picked up. Article One is the approval of the town's operating budget for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, which starts on July first of two thousand and twenty-two. Mr. Sala has the pleasure of having to read a rather long budget motion, which specifies what, where the money's coming from and what it's being transferred to, or what it's going to pay for. So if we can defer to Mr. Sala, he will read the motion as it appears on the screen above him.
The Finance Committee moves that the town appropriate the total sum of sixty-two million nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand one hundred and twenty-two dollars to defray the general fund salaries and expenses of the town for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, as set forth in the detailed budget under the column entitled Finance Committee Recommendation FY two thousand and twenty-three, and to meet said appropriations, raise and appropriate the sum of sixty-one million eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand six hundred and eighty dollars, and transfer the total sum of one million eighty-nine thousand four hundred and forty-two dollars as follows. Fund four-fifty cable enterprise, cable access enterprise indirect costs, seven thousand four hundred and six dollars. Fund four-sixty Gulf Enterprise indirect costs, eighty-two thousand nine hundred and five dollars. Fund four-seventy Sewer Enterprise indirect costs, four hundred and twelve thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars. Fund four-ninety Water Special Reserve Fund indirect costs, five hundred and eighty-six thousand six hundred and fifty-five dollars. And further, that the town approve the following special revenue and enterprise funds for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three budgets, all set forth at the end of the detailed budget. Appropriate from the conservation receipts, the total sum of twenty-six thousand, twenty-six hundred dollars to defray the conservation receipts reserved expenses for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, all as set forth in the detailed budget. Appropriate from cable enterprise receipts, the sum of two hundred and eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars, and to appropriate from cable enterprise receipts reserved, the sum of ninety-one thousand four hundred dollars to defray the cable access enterprise fund salaries and expenses for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, and the sum of seven thousand four hundred and six dollars to be appropriated in the general fund as shown and allocated to the cable access enterprise fund for funding all, for funding, all set forth in the detailed budget. Appropriate from Gulf- Appropriate from golf receipts, the total sum of $454,477 to defray the Golf Enterprise Fund salaries and expenses for fiscal year 2023, with the sum of $82,905 to be appropriated in the general fund as shown and allocated to the Golf Enterprise Fund for funding all as set forth in the detailed budget. Appropriate from sewer receipts, the total sum of $2,759,467 to defray the Sewer Enterprise Fund salaries and expenses for fiscal year 2023, with the sum of $412,476 to be appropriated in the general fund as shown and allocated to the Sewer Enterprise Fund for funding, all as set forth in the detailed budget. Appropriate from water receipts, the total sum of $3,071,130 to defray the Water Special Reserve Fund salaries and expenses for fiscal year 2023, with the sum of $586,655 to be appropriated in the general fund as shown and allocated to the Water Special Reserve Fund for funding, all as set forth in the detailed budget.
Well done. Matthew, thank you. That is the motion to approve the town's budget for the coming fiscal year. With all the source of revenues, it is a balanced budget. The budget is attached at the end of the handout, which is a three-page budget. First, are there any general questions? What I'm going to do is go each page at a time to see if there's any questions. But are there any general questions about the budget as a whole that anyone would like to ask? If so, please raise your hand. If not, looking on just page number one, which starts at the top, Town Meeting Salaries, and ends at the bottom with Total ADA or Total General Government Totals, are there any questions with any of the line items on page one of the budget presented, as presented? Mr. Burbine has a question, and we have a microphone coming up from behind you, Mr. Burbine.
Andy Burbine, 30 Lantern Lane. Question, three questions, actually. The town council seems to have increased quite a bit, if you could address that as to why that has happened, from $100,000 to $150,000. And then I see that the Conservation Commission and the Zoning Board have no budgets, so if you could address that as well. Thank you.
Mr. Lambiase, Town Manager.
So the town council, typically, we've been getting up and over on that the past few years. We have quite a bit that we're doing right now with bringing in new personnel policies, and we expect that it's going to be more expensive this year. As far as the zoning and the conservation, those positions were absorbed into my department and other departments, so the conservation, that was the administrative assistant who was dealing with that, is now up in the town manager's budget, and the zoning person was put down into the Building Department budget and part of my budget, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Lambiase. And I would like to take this time once again to remind people where it says things like Finance Committee salaries or Planning Board salaries or zoning or conservation salaries. The board members themselves are volunteers and get paid zero. The salaries that are listed here are for the secretarial administrative assistant help. Any other questions on page one? That also, I should say, includes the Board of Selectmen and the moderator. We all do it for free. If not, please turn to page two of the budget, which starts on the top with police salaries and ends at the bottom with total debt service. Are there any questions on page two? Seeing none, I would ask you to please turn to page three of the presented budget, which starts on the top with county retirement. The budget itself then ends with total miscellaneous, with the total number of the Finance Committee's recommended budget of $62,978,122. And on the bottom half of the sheet, the lists of some of the special revenue and enterprise funds. In simplest terms, those are some of the departments that pay for themselves, quote-unquote. The Sewer Department and the Water Department, you pay sewer fees, water fees, the golf course, you pay greens fees. Is there anything to be heard or any questions on page three of the budget? Mr. Sala?
Just one quick note, because it is a question that has come up quite a bit for the cable, Abington Cam. That does not actually come from the town budget. That comes from fees paid to Verizon and Comcast by anyone who has cable and lives in Abington, and the fees get funneled through the town to the Abington Cam. So slightly different than water, sewer, and golf, but along the same lines as far as budgeting and accounting purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Sala. Anything else to be heard on Article One, the approval of the town budget as moved by the Finance Committee? If not, all those in favor of approving the Finance Committee's motion, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. No, it's not unanimous, but the motion passes. Article Two, sick leave buyback, see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $72,000 from the water receipts reserved for the purpose of sick leave buyback for three retiring employees. Mr. Sala?
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article Two as printed in the warrant.
Finance Committee makes a motion to approve Article Two. Any questions or anything to be heard in Article Two? If not, all those in favor approving Article Two, is there a question up top? Question up top. Mr. Smith will bring you a microphone.
Nick Whitney, 70 Loganberry Drive. Just curious what the policy is, maybe this isn't the forum for it, but curious what the policy is on paying out sick leave.
What is the policy on paying out sick leave? And I'm sorry, was it Nick? What was your last name?
Whitney.
Whitney. Mr. Sala?
Just as a quick answer to that, it actually differs depending on each department and their particular collective bargaining agreement, but it's part of the collective bargaining agreement process.
Thank you. Anything else to be heard in Article Two? If not, all those in favor approving the Finance Committee's motion to approve Article Two, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. It is unanimous. Articles Three, Four, and Five are part of what we call tonight's consent agenda. Consent agenda is simply to help move the meeting along, make things more efficient. These are some articles that are routinely included in our town meeting, routinely passed with little or no debate, and we can vote on the three articles with one vote. The three articles include the annual funding of student transportation, which is basically funding for bus service to kids who want to go to such things as the vocational schools. Article Four is the town's donation or payment of $5,000 to the Health Imperative Violence Prevention Intervention Program for services for survivors of sexual assault and domestic violence. And Article Five is $2,500 to the ARC of the Cell Show of Services Provided to Abington Residents with Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities. Does anyone have any questions on any one of those three payments? Actually, I'm sorry, Mr. Sala, why don't you make the motion, please?
The Finance Committee moves that Articles Three, Four, and Five be combined into a consent agenda for the purposes of discussion and vote, and that said articles be approved as printed in the warrant with funds to be raised and appropriated.
Any questions on Articles Three, Four, and Five? If not, we'll take one vote to approve the consent agenda as proposed. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. It's unanimous. Thank you. We will move on now to Article Six, the Water Enterprise Fund, to see if the town will vote to accept provisions of Chapter 44, Section 53, F and a Half, et cetera, et cetera, as written. Mr. Sala?
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article Six as printed in the warrant.
And as I understand it, this is just reclassifying the type of account that we keep, it's the proper reclassification, not changing any fees or anything like that. Any questions on Article Six?
Just a quick note on it, if you were paying close attention when I was reading through the different parts of the budget motion, for most of them, I said enterprise fund, enterprise fund, enterprise fund, and then water, it was special receipts fund. So we're changing it to an enterprise fund to align it with everything else appropriately.
Thank you, Mr. Sala. Any questions on Article Six? Article Six requires a two-thirds vote, so all those in favor of approving Article Six, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. It is unanimous. Article Seven, borrowing authorization rescissions, to see if the town will vote to rescind the following amounts, which have been authorized to be borrowed but which are no longer needed for the purposes for which they originally approved or to take any other action relative thereto, and they're as listed in the printed warrant that you were given when you came in the door. Mr. Sala?
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article Seven as printed in the warrant.
As I understand it, these are all items that we, in years past, we approved money to borrow to take care of these things, but each of these things either came under budget, including the Memorial Arch, the new middle high school that you're standing in now, fire station feasibility, ambulance, and the Hancock and Lincoln Street paving, and also the landfill cap and another funding source, so we don't need to borrow all the money that was previously authorized. This is a housekeeping matter. Any questions on Article Seven? If not, all those in favor of approving Article Seven, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article Eight, Water Design and Treatment Plant Upgrades for PFAS, see if the town will vote to appropriate $13 million or the like amount to be approved by the town of Rockland, pay for the costs of making the water treatment plant improvements to address excessive levels of PFAS. Mr. Sala?
The Finance Committee moves to appropriate the sum of $13 million for the purposes stated in Article, sorry, old version. Finance Committee moves to appropriate $13 million to pay costs of making water treatment plants improvements to address excessive levels of PFAS in the water, including, without limitation, all costs thereof, as defined in Section One of Chapter 29(c) of the General Laws, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the select board is authorized to borrow $13 million and issue bonds or notes therefore under Chapter 44 of General Laws and/or Chapter 29(c) of the General Laws, that the treasurer with the approval of the select board is authorized to borrow all or portion, a portion of such amount from the Massachusetts Clean Water established pursuant to Chapter 29(c), and in connection therewith to enter into a loan agreement and/or security agreement with the trust, and otherwise to contact with the trust and the Department of Environmental Protection with respect to such loan and for any federal or state aid available for the project or for the financing thereof, and that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to enter into a project regulatory agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection to expend all funds available for the project and to take any other action necessary to carry out the project.
Thank you, Mr. Sala. I'm sorry, I should have warned you, when we borrow money, we have special attorneys who draft out the motions so that we are able to sell the bonds and borrow the money, and Mr. Sala has the joy of having to read it word for word. Thank you for doing that, Mr. Sala. Is there anything to be heard on Article Eight? There are a couple of hands. We could, there's one up there, and there's one in the back row in the middle, and there's one over there. Go ahead, Mr. Ryan.
Bo Ryan, 118 McKinley Drive. Would you just briefly explain what PFASs are, how they're generated, and what the mitigation would be here to eliminate them from the, briefly, briefly, by this funding?
Moderator would like to recognize Ms. Crystal Cameron, who is the new Water Superintendent for the Abington Water Works. Ms. Cameron?
PFASs are man-made chemicals. Basically, they were invented-
Talk right into the microphone, if you could.
Basically, they are invented to make our lives easier, so that you can find them in Teflon, firefighting foams, unfortunately. And, you know, the way that they have found their way into our water is they, you know, have broken down in the things that we've gotten rid of, landfills, things like that, and they don't go away. So they, we have to physically take them out of the water using, you know, a filtration system, which is what we're, you know, getting our engineers together to design. What was the rest of the question? I do have a little snippet on what, you know, the engineers have, you know, put together, if you'd like to hear it for that.
No, I think we're good, but we do have a couple of hands that might ask specific. Superintendent Cameron, you might want to stay right where you are, because there's a few more questions. One right here in the last row. Please stand, state your name and your address.
Hi, good evening. I'm Katie Van Est, 193 Colonial Road, and I just had a quick question. So I'm wondering why, and I'm jumping ahead a little bit, I'm sorry, why Article 10, Part C, Number Seven, the $30,000 for the carbon filter replacement, isn't rolled into the $13 million that's part of Article Eight? Is that because the filter will need to be replaced before any of the new stuff is implemented?
So it's actually a yearly thing. So the way that, when, like I said, PFAS has to be physically removed from the water. So when the PFAS adheres to the media that we have to use, which is a special type of media called GAC, Granular Activated Carbon, once it's adhered to that media, it's considered hazardous waste. So once that media has been exhausted, we have to physically remove it from the filter vessel and then replace it with new media. So it's going to be a yearly cost. We're anticipating one to two times a year, we're going to have to do it.
Oof, okay.
Yeah, it's, you know, a costly thing, but it's worth it, I think, to everybody.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
For sure.
Thank you. Another question near Mr. Nagel. If you could state your name and address.
Hi, Kathy Creighton, 53 Vineyard Road. I have a question that doesn't seem to have been addressed, is what is the source? You know, there is a potentially responsible party out there. I don't believe that Abington actually created this PFAS problem. Somebody did, you know, it could be anything from Boston Whaler to something else, but are we going to do an investigation? Because most towns have done a really nice site investigation to figure out where the source is. I'm glad we're treating it, because certainly we don't want it in our water, but I think it is extremely important, and does this $13 million include that site investigation? Because I think we're making a mistake not trying to find out where it is and trying to find out the person that caused the problem for us in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Creighton. Superintendent Cameron?
Thank you. The $13 million does not include finding out the source. This is just to treat it. However, the Mass DEP has already started to look into what the source is. So they actually have contacted the town of Rockland to start doing some spot sampling in the rivers coming from, you know, the rivers come from the airbase, and they actually lead right towards one of our water treatment plants. Whether or not it's the source, I'm not 100% sure at this point right now. I don't think they are either, but the PFAS was most definitely elevated in that source that they found. So it's, to have the Mass DEP actually working on something like that, it's a really good, you know, step in the right direction for us.
Thank you, Superintendent. There's a question in the front row of the back rear section. If you have a question, just raise your hand, we'll try to have someone near you.
Jean Matios, 32 Nile Street. Just along the same lines that Mrs. Creighton just brought up, is the PFAS found in both the Abington and Rockland joint reservoir, as well as the Myers Street wells?
That's correct. We have treatment already in place at the Myers Water Treatment Plant. We have GAC filters there that's removing the PFAS there. So, and it's at, it's in the Hingham Street reservoir as well, in Rockland.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Nagel.
Pat Kearney, 652 Adams Street. Is this motion contingent upon Rockland passing the same appropriation bill?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Abington would be approving $13 million, and Rockland would be asked to approve $13 million. Sorry.
That's all right. I thought it was done.
I'm sorry. So that if it doesn't pass in Rockland, then we're not going to borrow the money either?
Right, and we shut off all the faucets in Rockland.
Thank you.
Just kidding. Sorry. Is there a question over here?
Fran Cronin, 458 Summer Street. I understand that there are a couple of towns, Braintree comes to mind, who have received grants, so this doesn't preclude us from applying for grants to address this issue.
Absolutely not. We're going to push as hard as we can to get more grants. We've received a couple as of right now, and we're going to continue. So the $26 million, if you take the 13 from Abington and the 13 from Rockland, that's not a set amount that we will borrow. We're going to continue to push for more grants, and then what the end result will be, you know, depending on if they give us loan forgiveness as well, you know, it could be less than $26 million. $26 is worst case.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? There's a question back up on the top there. Mr. Hickey, I believe? Hope that was right. Is there another one over here, too? Yep. Whoever gets the microphone, let's, sorry, I just, yeah, I recognize him first. Go right ahead, sir.
Nick Whitney, 70 Loganberry Drive. I guess the question is on the options for the Water Trust. Is that considered less attractive because it may take longer sort of bureaucratically, and you'd rather just go out for the bond? Or, I guess, talk about that option and sort of financially, obviously, it may be better, but is there a time sensitivity piece with not pursuing that?
There is a time sensitivity piece with this. We need, the Mass DEP has given us a certain amount of time in order to fulfill our obligation with us. So right now, if we don't get the money to borrow and we don't start the project, they can actually have us shut off these sources that we have, which will put us in trouble as far as having- us shut off these sources that we have, which will put us in trouble as far as having enough water for fire protection. You know, we won't have enough water for the towns, first of all. And second of all, they can also, instead of doing that, they can fine us daily, which would be obviously a bad thing. So we're just trying to push forward with the fastest option and the smartest option.
How much funding is available with the trusts and sort of?
I'm not a hundred percent sure about that.
When you're referring to the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, it's mentioned in the article.
Correct.
Which I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, offers low or no interest loans.
Right. Yep. Right now, we're going for the twenty-six. That's, that's the worst case scenario. We're not sure one hundred percent where we are on the list, but we've been told, not officially, but, you know, we've got good word that we will be approved for it, should everybody here help us get that vote. And, you know, we'd like to get moving on the project. That would be great.
Thank you. Was there another question over here? Yes, sir.
Paul Ferris, 1020 Hancock Street, Abington. If Rockland doesn't approve their half of this thirteen million dollars, would the town of Abington be responsible for the entire amount?
No.
No.
It's half and half.
Our vote tonight is to approve up to thirteen million for Abington's share, which, as was mentioned by the Superintendent, could be less but won't be more.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Burbine.
Andy Burbine, 30 Lantern Lane. Two questions. How long will it take to build this plant, whatever needs to be done? And you said this is worst case scenario. Worst case scenario, do you have what this will cost the rate payer?
I don't have that information as far as the rate payers go. It will most likely cause an increase in the rates because we have to pay this loan back. How much that's, how much that will be is going to be dependent on how much we borrow. So if it's, we get a lot of loan forgiveness, if we get a lot of grants, which we will be pursuing, it'll be less. So, you know, we're, we're definitely being mindful of that. How long the project's going to take? It's probably about two to three years. And that's the entire project altogether. So we're, we're doing a lot of it. We, we want to do a lot of work. So, you know, two to three years most likely, the worst case, I hope.
Thank you. There's a question over the far left.
Rich Nagrally, 340 Diane Circle. Does this increase our water at all by this project?
One of the grants that we received back in, six months ago, did, was for that. It was 2.24 million dollars for Myers Avenue Water Treatment Plant. But this is primarily just for improvements. That grant, though, will be rolled into this project so that we can kind of do it all at once. That grant would be to, was to put forward for the well number four over at Myers Ave and some improvements that we were doing over there. But that was just for that, for the increase of the water over there. But we're going to do all the work. It just makes sense that way to do it all at the same time.
Any other questions for Article 8? It's a borrowing article, so it does require at least a two-thirds vote. Not hearing or seeing any other raised hands, I'll take a mo-, I'll take a vote. The Finance Committee's motion was to approve with all that language. All those in favor of approving the Finance Committee's motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. And I would like to welcome Superintendent Cameron. She's been essentially on the job for four days. Baptism by fire. Thank you very much. Moving on to Article 9, the Community Preservation Budget. See if the town of Abington will vote to adopt the report of the Community Preservation Committee for fiscal year 2023, which you have that in the warrant in front of you. It shows you their expected revenues and how they have recommended that we invest this money back into our town through community preservation expenses, open space and recreation improvements, historical and housing, and also putting some money into their, their reserves. Mr. Sala?
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article 9 as printed in the warrant.
Finance Committee makes a motion to approve Article 9 as printed in the warrant. Is there any questions on Article 9, the Community Preservation Budget? If not, all those in favor approving Article 9, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article 10, the Capital Plan. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow or lease, purchase or otherwise provide for the following capital items and all costs incidental there too. The Capital Plan is printed with Sections A through I. The funding sources are identified on the right side, essentially the money that is available, including free cash, water receipts, sewer money, golf money, and money from the Biden Administration and Congress, the American Rescue Plan Act down on the bottom of I. Mr. Sala?
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article 10 as printed in the warrant with the deletion of Item F3, Strawberry Valley Golf ADA Compliance Upgrades, and with the revision to Item F4, Strawberry Valley Golf Free, Golf Tree Removal and Replacement by increasing the amount from five thousand to fifty thousand.
The Finance Committee makes a motion to approve it with those amendments. So under Section F, Number 3, ADA Compliance, you can strike it out. And Number 4, Tree Removal, will change from five thousand to fifty thousand. Is there anything to be heard on the Finance Committee's motion as presented? If not, all those in favor of approving the Finance Committee's motion on Article 10, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Article 11, Capital Projects Borrowing. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow the following sums for the stated capital projects listed below. And you can see the list of library roof replacement purchase, a snow sidewalk plow, a bucket truck, Randolph Street Design for the Traffic Improvement Plan or the TIP, and to grind and pave Linwood and Plymouth Street for a total of $2,852,000. Mr. Sala?
The Finance Committee moves to appropriate $2,852,000 for the stated capital project purposes in the amounts listed below, that to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow $2,852,000 under General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, 1, or any other enabling authority, and that the Board of Selectmen is authorized to take any other action necessary to carry out these projects.
And those projects, again, are listed, library roof-
Those projects, library roof, nine hundred thousand dollars, sidewalk plow, one hundred and seventy thousand dollars, bucket truck, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, Randolph Street Design for TIP, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, grind and pave Linwood and Plymouth Streets, one million, one hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, for a total of two million, eight hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars.
So this will be another borrowing article. The plan is to borrow this money to pay for these projects, since these listed projects are intended and designed to extend for a significant portion of time. As an example for that, the sidewalk plow that we are replacing was first purchased in 1964. We're going to make a monument out of that one. Anything to be heard on the Finance Committee's motion to approve Article 11? The bucket truck will be one hundred thousand instead of two fifty. Sorry, yep, you're right. That's the way it's, see, like I said before, don't listen to the screen, listen to the warrant. So the warrant is one hundred thousand, I mean, sorry, the bucket truck is one hundred thousand, not two hundred and fifty. But it still does total like to two million, eight hundred and fifty-two. Yeah. That's my, that's my fault. I typed that. Any questions on the motion for Article 11? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
The moderator declares a two-thirds passes. Article 12, ADA Accessible Ramp to the Frolio School. To see if the town will transfer from the unused balance of funds to, from the 2017 Annual Town Meeting, Article 3, exterior lift from the Frolio, the amount of eighty-five thousand in order to pay for the survey, design and bidding of an ADA and AAB, which is Architectural Assets Access Board, accessible ramp to the Frolio School Building, anything incidental relative there too. Mr. Sala?
The Finance Committee moves to approve Article 12 as printed in the warrant.
Finance Committee makes a motion to approve Article 12. Anything to be heard? Any questions on Article 12? If not, all those in favor approving Article 12, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. Articles 13, 14, 15, 16, and 17, or 13 through 16 are zoning amendments. I'm going to step down as moderator, so there's no appearance of any conflict of interest. And I'd like to welcome our Deputy Moderator, Michael Franny, to come up and take the, the control of the debate and to walk us through the next couple of articles. I shall return. We even brought a little light for Mike so he could see. You're in trouble now.
Article 13 is to see if the town will vote to amend Section 175-24.1 of the Abington zoning bylaws to replace registered marijuana dispensaries with medical marijuana dispensary center, and by replacing the acronym RMD with the acronym MMTC throughout, or taking any other action there too. That's Planning Board?
The Finance Committee defers to the Planning Board to make a motion on Article 13.
Can everybody hear me okay? I got a cold thing going on. All right. Liz Shea, 3 Wyman Road, and I'm the Assistant Town Planner. The Planning Board recommends approval of Article 13 with a minor edit to one of the acronyms contained in the article. The article is basically a housekeeping article. Section 175-24.1 of our local zoning bylaw contains our local regulations regarding medical marijuana treatment centers. An approval of this article will complete the updating of the terminology in our local bylaw in order to be consistent with the recent updates made to our state laws and regulations. What were formerly called registered marijuana dispensaries are now referred to in state regulations as medical marijuana treatment centers. And act, and the acronym RMD has since been replaced with the updated acronym of MTC. This article mistakenly referred to the acronym of MMTC instead of the correct version of MTC. So our motion will correct that acronym to ensure all the changes to 174-24.1 are correct and conform to state law. Thus, the Planning Board moves to amend Section 174-24.1 of the Abington zoning bylaw by replacing the term registered marijuana dispensaries with the term medical marijuana treatment center and by replacing the acronym RMD with the acronym MTC where appropriate throughout Section 175-24.1.
Thank you. Thank, thank you, Mrs. Shea. Any questions on Article 13? If not, all in favor of the article, kind of signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
I declare it's unanimous. I mean, passes. Okay, Article 14, zoning amendment, multiple protect production and cultivation overlay, overlay district. To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws, bylaws by adopting the following new bylaw, establishing a new zone overlay district which will allow the cultivation, testing and processing of marijuana, but would prohibit any marijuana retail stores, treatment centers, or delivery businesses, therein as follows, and further, to authorize the town clerk to assign the proper chapter and section numbers by said bylaw inconsistent with the current numbering system. Mrs., yes. I, I apologize. I wasn't aware that Article 13 had to pass by two-thirds vote, which it obviously did. So I want to declare that, that Article 13 passed by two-thirds vote. Mrs. Shea?
Oh, okay.
This is on Article 14.
Article 14.
Yeah.
Okay.
The Finance Committee defers to the Planning Board.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Okay, we've already done the introduction. I'm going to ask everybody to give me a couple of minutes to get through this because I'm going to try to address some concerns up front. After holding its required public hearing on March 7, 2022, the Planning Board voted to recommend approval of this Article 14 to create a new overlay district to be called the Marijuana Production and Cultivation Overlay District, or the MPCOD District. For years, our community has sought to try to attract commercial investment in our town, which will create limited impact to our town and our municipal services while also generating increased commercial tax revenues to help relieve part of the tax burden on the Abington homeowners. The recent rise of the, of the marijuana cultivation industry presents an immediate opportunity for Abington, given that cultivation and production businesses generate very little traffic, cause no environmental hazards, do not create noise or other nuisances, have no effect on our school population, and will help provide the town with far more tax revenue than any other type of business in this area due to the additional fees and revenues which towns are legally allowed to assess against marijuana, marijuana businesses. For clarification, please note, Abington has previously approved and enacted a marijuana overlay district which is located on the northern portions of Bedford Street and Adams Street, but that overlay district, district allows for retail marijuana stores and other marijuana businesses. The overlay district being proposed tonight is a new and separate overlay district which would not allow any additional marijuana retail stores, but would only allow marijuana production and cultivation businesses to invest in Abington, and the location of this overlay district would be limited to the area north of Chestnut Street and west of Hancock Street. If you please be with me for a few more minutes, I will try to explain the purpose of this bylaw, its expected benefits to our town, and how it relates to our existing zoning bylaws and environmental regulations. Almost all of the land which lies north of Chestnut Street between Hancock Street and North Quincy Street is situated within our Multiple Use Plan Development District, or Muppet District, which is commonly referred to as Muppet District. The boundaries of the Muppet District, zoning district are shown in purple on our zoning map, which, I'm not sure if we have a zoning map up there yet, but it, we have one that's in purple. The boundaries of the proposed Marijuana Production and Cultivation Overlay District would be laid over and would share the same boundary lines as the existing Muppet District shown on the zoning map. The Muppet District is one of several types of zoning districts in our town and was created and intended to attract low-impact commercial investment while also preventing the use of this land for large multifamily development projects. However, the Muppet District also requires the coordinated development of larger parcels of land and perhaps with multiple buildings or various uses, and therefore the underlying Muppet zoning district currently requires any new development in this area to be constructed on a parcel with at least ten acres of land and two hundred feet of frontage. Abington zoning bylaw already contains a list of specific businesses and uses which can be developed within the Muppet District, and the bylaw proposed in Article 14 would add an additional type of business which would be allowed to be located in this area of Abington, namely marijuana production or cultivation. The Planning Board recognizes that these type of marijuana cultivation businesses are expected to produce very little traffic or noise and no increase to our school population while also providing the town with a new source of revenue other businesses do not provide. For these reasons, the bylaw removes the requirement that cultivation businesses must be located on large lots with over ten acres and two hundred feet of frontage, and instead would encourage this investment in Abington so long as the parcel contains at least two acres of land and seventy-five feet of frontage. As much as we would like to attract this type of low-impact business to our town, we do not want to attract large national companies who would not hesitate to clear ten or twenty acres of land in order to construct a set of huge warehouses. Instead, Articles 4, Article 14's proposed regulations are intended to attract smaller and mid-sized businesses which would invest in Abington but who might not need to purchase and develop over ten acres of land. Similarly, reducing the required street frontage from two hundred feet to seventy-five feet has a few design development benefits and environmental benefits. The goal of this frontage requirement would be to encourage new cultivation buildings to be constructed far off the roadways in this overlay district with driveway entrance which extends from the street and which minimizes the need to clear all the trees near the street. If we allow a cultivation business to be constructed on a parcel which has seventy-five feet of frontage, the remainder of the zoning bylaw would not allow any building to be constructed within the seventy-five-foot wide area because other sections of our zoning bylaw, the existing sections of our zoning bylaw, require any new building in this zoning district to be at least fifty feet away from all lot lines. Obviously, if the front entrance to the parcel of land is seventy-five feet wide, it is not possible to build a building within that area which would be fifty feet off the left sideline and fifty feet off the right sideline. If however, we left the two hundred foot frontage requirements in place, there would be no disincentive to provide a developer from clear cutting all trees along the street line so that the developer could construct a one hundred foot wide building near the street, since that size building would fit on a parcel which was two hundred feet wide. Thus, this bylaw's requirement that any new marijuana cultivation building is required to have seventy-five feet of frontage effectively offers more protection to one of nearby neighbors and would encourage or even force the construction of buildings much farther back and out of view from the street. We would like to thank Town Council Amy Quessell for her assistance and her review of this proposed bylaw. It is important to note that the revised seventy-five foot frontage and two acre lot size requirements apply only to marijuana production and cultivation businesses. They would not apply to, that seventy-five feet and two acres applies to no other business except marijuana production and cultivation. Every other proposed, proposed business or use within the Muppet District- Every other proposed business or use within the Muppet District off Chestnut Street and Hancock Street would still have to comply with the 200-foot frontage and the 10-acre lot size requirements. Regarding the environmental laws and regulations, please note that the approval of this Marijuana Production and Cultivation Overlay District will not change or lessen any of the existing state, local, or federal environmental laws and regulations. Wetland protection laws will still apply, as will protections for any endangered species, and Cushing Pond will always remain a protected area. And Article 14's smaller lot size and lot frontage requirements should also benefit smaller cultivation businesses and minimize the need to clear much louder swaths, much larger swaths of existing forest land which might be more likely if the 200-foot, 10-acre requirements were not adjusted by the proposed bylaw. In addition to new property taxes, the town can also collect a community impact fee of up to 3% of the cultivation business's gross revenue. Although no retail marijuana stores will be allowed in this new overlay district, we note that state law requires all Massachusetts retail marijuana stores to purchase its inventory from only Massachusetts cultivation businesses. Any marijuana product which is sold by an Abington marijuana retail business will also pay a local 3% tax and a local community impact fee to our town upon each sale. From the retail stores alone, Abington expects to receive a few hundred thousand dollars of local tax revenue from each Abington retail store, which is in addition to the community impact fees which each production and cultivation business must pay to the town. All marijuana cultivation and production must take place in a permanent building such as a warehouse-style building. While the existing Muppet zoning regulations already allow warehouses to be constructed off Chestnut Street and Hancock Street, a building which is home to a marijuana cultivator will help to generate significantly more tax revenue to our town than will a warehouse which contains any other type of inventory or equipment. Because these cultivation buildings will basically be similar to a large greenhouse and because no retail sales or deliveries to consumers are allowed, we do not anticipate any significant increase in daily traffic volume if this article is approved. The town of Whitman has not yet enacted local zoning bylaws to allow for marijuana retail stores or marijuana cultivation businesses, but Whitman will be voting at their town meeting on May 2 to approve these new uses and create the new overlay districts. Obviously, if Abington does not approve this production and cultivation overlay district tonight, we will likely lose those potential business investments and tax revenues to other nearby towns such as Whitman. Thank you for your time and your attention. I hope this summary was helpful and that you will join the planning board by voting to support this article. We believe the article is well-written and that it encourages low-impact business investment in Abington, that it specifically allows and attempts to attract smaller production and cultivation businesses instead of only attracting larger projects, that the bylaw does nothing to weaken any existing environmental or wetlands protection laws, that this bylaw as presented will present a best opportunity to take advantage of increased revenues for our town without adding any additional burden on Abington's homeowners. For all the reasons above, the Planning Board moves to approve Article 14 as printed in the warrant.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea. Before I proceed, and that was very well done, I think it helped to answer any questions that might come up, or maybe it will make more questions, but this is a rather lengthy zoning article. If anybody wants time to go through it for a minute, I could give you a minute, so just raise your hand if you want to go through those pages, that's fine. If not, we'll proceed with questions for the Planning Board. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Thanks, Mrs. Shea. Very, very well done. Appreciate that and you keeping the best interests of the town of Abington in mind. It was really very helpful for you to read that. Just one question. Has someone approached the town for, to cultivate marijuana in any particular land?
To my knowledge, no. The town manager and I had a conversation back in, I don't know, November or December that that area might be a good use for cultivation and production. We have had many calls about cultivation and production, and we had no area specifically for that, just like I'm getting a lot of calls about battery energy storage and we have no area for that either, so.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Pat Kearney, 652 Adams Street. Liz, is the 75-feet frontage a minimum or a maximum?
I would say that would be minimum, right?
So, so somebody could potentially buy a lot with 200 feet of frontage and still do what we're trying to avoid?
Not if we don't have a zoning bylaw that allows it.
Right, but even if we try to reduce them to 75 feet of frontage, which we're hoping creates a driveway way back to a warehouse somewhere that you don't see with the trees...
To use smaller parcels, yes.
Yeah, they're not going to be held to that, though. If they wanted to buy a lot that had 200 feet of frontage, they could potentially build it, put a parking lot in front of it and put the building 50 feet right off the street where everybody driving by would see it?
Yeah, they can do that now.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, just in this bylaw on page 7, number 5, it does indicate that the 75 feet would be a minimum of frontage.
Thank you.
So, any further questions, please?
Mr. Franny?
Sir?
Michael Sullivan, 79 Walker Lane. How many acres does the overlay district cover?
The proposed cultivation and production district would be 75 feet of frontage and 2 acres. The current Muppet overlay district is 10 acres and 200 feet of frontage.
And how many facilities could be built on the site based on the proposed zoning?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Any of their residential homes currently in that overlay district?
Yes, they are. Well, they lie in the Muppet District and this would lie on top of that.
And to familiarize myself, are we looking at from 139 to Chestnut Street is the overlay district?
So Hancock Street by the Lobster Barn for a point, so you'd come down Hancock Street and then you'd go down Chestnut Street, and then it ends, I think, before Chestnut Glen.
On both sides of Chestnut Street?
No. If you're going down Chestnut Street towards Brockton, it would be only the right-hand side.
And going down to pass where the Buddhist temple is?
It would be from Hancock Street all the way.
I think that was the Board of Selectmen that did that.
Or maybe it been the moderator's feedback.
Just one question, I think what Mike was, what is on this Muppet, what is the total acreage up there? Is anybody on the planning board?
Do any of you guys know?
I think that's what you're asking, Mike, is what?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the total acreage. It would include the, if you're driving down Hancock Street from Route 139, the house is on the right-hand side, and then you would take a right onto Chestnut Street, and it would be the right-hand side until you got to about Chestnut Glen.
Yeah, okay. All right, any other questions?
Rich Negreli, zoning board, 340 Diane Circle. The zoning board looked over this and we noticed that you're taking away the variance from the zoning board, and also, I mean, this is a big article with a lot of different things such as signage changes. The zoning board was in charge of signage. Why here? Why that whole area? That's the question. There are residents that live right up on Chestnut Street and also on Hancock Street. This is a very vague changes in the bylaws. You can basically, like you just said over there, someone could put as big as buildings they want to because the zoning board's not going to be involved in this. It's going to be the planning board, that's it. If you vote for this...
Mr. Negreli, can I just take your concerns one at a time?
All right, go ahead.
So you're saying that we're not changing any zoning authority whatsoever?
So you're not taking the variance away from, I mean, it's a Muppet Zone, so that would be, a variance would be...
And zoning that currently exists in the Muppet District, so I believe the zoning board has the authority to grant variances in the Muppet District for frontage?
Now you're changing...
You would still have that in the Muppet District.
Yes, but now you're changing it to an overlay.
The overlay is for marijuana...
And what are we talking about, humpy plants?
Can we just slow down one person, talk at a time, please?
Go ahead, go.
Thank you. The 75 feet and the 2 acres of land are for marijuana cultivation and production only. That's it.
Yeah, but what is culture? What is it? Is that five plants I got over here? Now I can build whatever I want over here? What is that? How does that create a zone?
The state regulates marijuana cultivation and production under the, with the Cannabis Control Commission, regulates all of that.
This is very vague, and there are a lot of things in here that you should be reading. The zoning board voted against this, okay? That's all.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I would like to mention that nobody from the zoning board reached out to anybody on the planning board, nor did they attend our public hearing to ask any of these questions to clear up the vague.
The last meeting, we did get an updated version. It was never completely different.
No, but you didn't attend the planning board hearing, that's what I said, sir.
One person speak.
Last meeting, and we voted no.
Okay, but what I said was you didn't attend the planning board hearing, nor did you reach out and ask any questions. We would have been happy to answer any questions.
Okay, yes, sir.
I have a question.
Ma'am, I'm sorry.
About halfway out Chestnut Street from Hancock out to North Quincy, I believe it was 500 North Quincy, there's a big driveway, narrow, goes in, and there's a huge number of buildings in there. I don't know how many. I don't even know what they do. They don't have any sign or anything. Would that be interrupting whatever the town is allowed to go in there? Does it extend that far out?
So that's part of the Muppet District, and that's Mr. Fiore's project. He's starting to build it now. This change would allow him to do marijuana and cultivation out there because the district goes that far.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
This gentleman right up here, left. Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
Nick Whitney, 70 Loganberry Drive. We just talked about, you know, taking a bond for 13 million for water. Are there any considerations to water for these operations? Are they mandated to use a well on-site, or do they have access to town water?
So the last marijuana retail project that the planning board approved, they were going to be bringing in their own water, trucking it in. And that's on Route 18, it's part of the retail which is separate from this, but they said until they could get water from the town, they would be trucking it in.
I guess is that considered in this bill, or is that a separate piece?
So this, well, there's two, that's the retail, I'm just telling you, past practice, the last hearing the planning board had was when they discussed growing of plants, because this place was going to grow them and sell them, they were going to bring in water.
And you said, sorry, you said earlier the revenue potential is 200 to 300K, maybe similar to the retail operation?
No, it won't because it's, not retail sales. They would have to determine what the revenue would be through a community host agreement.
And that's based on number of plants or volume produced?
The Board of Selectmen do the community host agreement, so I don't have an answer for you there.
This gentleman right here, go ahead. Mike?
Mike Demakal, 30 Karen Wayne. Just a couple of questions. At a previous town meeting, there was a zoning change to do the frontage to 75 feet at the end of Hancock Street by the Lobster Barn. Would that make it, would this override that?
That change didn't pass town meeting.
No, it didn't, I know.
No. This 75 feet would only be for marijuana cultivation and production. It would apply to nothing else.
So someone couldn't open up that roadway to go into the, to that land, I think that land in the back is part of this district?
I mean, anybody could do that now, right? Well, if they, no, but if they wanted to put a road in, the town has road standards that would have to be used.
Well, I'm just saying...
I mean, if that's what you're asking, if they can put a road in the back, they can use 75 feet of frontage, but they can't have a building there because you need 50 feet on either side.
I'll put it this way, that zoning 75 feet was turned down at a town meeting because they wanted to run trucks up there to the back where there's a lot of deadlocked land up there. Is that deadlocked land up there part of this district?
Yes.
Can I just interrupt?
Yes.
So my question would be, if it's part of this district, would that 75 feet apply on that Hancock Street entrance so they can go in there and do cultivation of marijuana?
Yes.
It would. So we rescind our previous...
It doesn't rescind the vote, it's only for marijuana cultivation and production.
So they could bring trucks in there now through and push them up?
That could happen anyway. That's a large parcel of land back there that that developer still owns.
It wasn't feasible, well, the town turned down that zoning. All right, I'll pass on that. Second question, at another previous town meeting, we increased the marijuana licenses, and it was one of the selling was that where that old mattress factory was, they were going to build one of the, they were going to grow marijuana there and use it to distribute to other retailers of marijuana. Is that still going, or is that dead?
So we increased the licenses from 2 to 5 at a previous town meeting, and they were all retail licenses so people could sell. That particular project, the planning board just finished with him, and right now, he's going to do it in phases, so his first phase is going to be to sell marijuana.
Okay.
Eventually, he hopes to have a small grow facility and I'm not sure of the exact terminology, but he'll do like craft marijuana, right? Different blends, I don't know. Not my business.
Well, let me just say this, I was one of the ones that worked for marijuana in this town to get revenue, but this has gone out of control. We used to be called the Used Car Capital Abington. Now it seems like we're going to be full of marijuana shops and plants throughout this town, and I don't see any good of it. It's not worth the money. I should have listened to Andy Burbine that way back then, when I was for that, but I think this is a bad idea, totally bad. And I read this article, which Mr. Collins did a nice job in the Abington News, and actually, it's excellent in every article, and it also stated in here that a company has expressed interest in opening a production and cultivation business at the complex at 500 Chestnut Street.
Well, that's why he's a reporter.
Rick Collins, I thought, wrote this.
Yeah, and I said that's why he's a reporter. I don't have any knowledge about that.
So he knows about it, and you on the planning board don't know about it? Okay, that's, he answered all my questions.
Yeah, Chris, go ahead. Thank you.
My name's Dan Broman, I live at 222 Linwood Street. I'm a taxpayer, voter, and concerned citizen. I have seven reasons why to vote no on Article 14. One, Route 18 is a better location. Two, priority protection area according to the Old Colony Planning Council. Three, core habitat according to Fish and Wildlife's Natural Heritage Foundation. Number four, it is an area of the last remaining white cedar and species of special concern, the Hesse-Hare Street butterfly. Number five, it's a green corridor for wildlife. Number six, this is out of the goal, this is out of the Abington Master Plan, the goal, one of the goals of the Abington Master Plan written in 2019. Lead by example for surrounding communities in terms of promoting stewardship of ecologically valuable areas and endeavor to protect that land in perpetuity. And number seven, like Lady Abington, who was blasted to make way for Route 18, once it's gone, it's gone forever. Thank you.
Chris, there's a gentleman up, far left-hand corner, all the way up the top. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead. Go first.
Who?
No, you, you go first. Chris, there's a gentleman all the way up the top corner, would you please raise your hand?
I got one.
All right, go for it. All right, go for it.
He's been waiting.
Go ahead, Mr. Burbine.
Thank you, Mr. Franny. Andy Burbine, 30 Lantern Lane. I'm also chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I just wanted to read what we adopted at our most recent meeting. It was moved to disapprove and to recommend the article we passed over. The board felt that the adoption of Article 14 would not be in the best interest of the town, and especially the Chestnut Street and Hancock Street neighborhoods. The zoning board was concerned with the provision in the article that reduces the frontage requirement from the current 200 feet to the proposed 75 feet, specifically for the reason that Mr. Demarco pointed out, and the provision that reduces the lot size requirement from the current 10 acres to the proposed 2 acres, and we would move that this article we passed over.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Burbine. Just one thing for clarification, is I understand that article, and again, I don't have a horse in a race, so it, it's a minimum of 75 feet. It could be larger than that, if you put it in. You know, you could tell it. If you vote the 75, that's fine, but you could vote 100, you could vote 200. That's the way I understood the article. Anyways, go ahead.
Michael Sullivan, 79 Walker Lane. But we have a motion to pass over. Do we have to take up that motion first, Mr. Moderator?
I'd just like to give it a couple minutes, Mike, to just make sure that everybody is heard that wanted to speak on the article.
Okay. I have a question on the water, because I'm not sure it's been fully answered in terms of whether or not municipal water is going to be required. It's been described that you're going to be putting up a number of commercial-type buildings, warehouses. I understand warehouses have to be properly sprinkled today under Massachusetts law. Where's the water coming from? We've always had limitations with regards to water in the town of Abington. I'd much rather have the water available for other types of development than for manufacturing facilities for marijuana. And it's still not clear to me exactly how many manufacturing facilities could actually be squeezed on this acreage that we're talking about for the overlay district.
So, I mean, I can let the chief speak to sprinkling and the amount of water that that it takes, but any building of a specific size, I believe, would have to be sprinkled? So I mean, I guess that's your choice, if you want marijuana cultivation and production, or you want another type of manufacturing, or some other type of business in Abington that would require sprinklers. And again, I don't have that answer for you, how large the whole area is.
Could maybe the chief answer that question? You thought you were going to get the night off, didn't you?
John Otto, your fire chief. Regardless of the building that goes in there, it's going to have to be sprinkled unless it is a residential home. So whether it's a marijuana facility, or just any type of a warehouse, you know, space owner building, they're all going to exceed the minimum requirements for sprinklers. You're going to need sprinkler anyway. That's a fire flow, that's a little, even though a fire flow can be a lot of water, it's really for one-time use, we hope. We try to prevent that. As opposed to if it's an industrial usage of water, and I'm now probably should, to refer back to the water department, I have no idea what's going in there to know how much water that would be. But either way, unless it was a residential home, right now they are not required to be sprinkled. Any other commercial industrial building would have to be sprinkled.
Thank you, chief. Rick, please.
Hi, Rick Collins, 74 Orange Street. I am a member of the planning board. A couple of things to need to clarify first is that the amount that the town would receive from this, is this me that's buzzing, or is this, or is there an earthquake?
Couple of points to quickly clarify. The amount that, of money that the town would receive from a manufacturing or cultivation operation is 3% of the total gross based on local sales tax. Town meeting smartly passed a local sales tax on retail marijuana, actually, all marijuana sales, a couple of years ago. That applies to wholesale sales. So if a company makes it, manufactures it, grows it, cuts it up, puts it into edibles in Abington, and then sells it to another shop somewhere in the state, the town gets a 3% sales tax on that. A 100,000-square-foot grow facility could generate between 40 to 50 million dollars in sales. Anyone who's good at math, finance committee, that could mean over a million dollars annually for Abington. Not saying it's going to happen, but if this is approved, and a large facility goes into someplace along here, that could mean 1 million dollars in tax revenue to the town. And I want people to remember that. If we go either way, that's okay. We're friends here. This is a good reason, you know, environment is a very good reason to say no to things. But when the bill comes due for the fire station, I want people to remember the vote that we take in here, because that's going to make a big difference. The, the other part of this, and I'll double-check with town council about this part, the town has met its minimum requirement of licenses that it has to, it can hand out to, for retail sales, right? Under state law, we're supposed to hand out, I think, 20% of our liquor store licenses. So that would have been two. And we voluntarily increased it to five, is my understanding. And we have issued five licenses. So my understanding is that as a town, as the Board of Selectmen, they don't have to approve any additional... Do they need a community host agreement? Does the town have to approve it? Okay. The town can say no to any grow facility that it chooses to, because we don't have to give them a host community agreement. That's something to keep in mind, that even if we approve this, we can still say no to any proposal for a grow facility that comes before the town, if we don't like the project, if we don't think it's good for Abington. Please keep that in mind also. Finally, the planning board understands the sensitivities about this environmentally important area. The initial thought was just to keep it clean by putting the overlay district over the entire Muppet District. But what we've heard in conversations is that it's probably too much, and we certainly don't want people to think that we're trying to do an end run, end run around on that Hancock Chestnut Street proposal. So the planning board earlier tonight approved an amendment that we're going to be offering. We can't, it's not on the floor right now, but for the next part, that shrinks the map where this district would be located, so that these facilities could only be located west of the High Tension wires that go across Chestnut Street. So that means the entire Chestnut Street Hancock Street corner would not be included in this zoning district. It wouldn't start, if you kept going down Chestnut Street, past the temple, past the pond, you'd get to High Tension wires. That's when the district would start. Okay? So we will be offering that as an amendment when we take up Article 15. Unfortunately, there's an order. We have to take up the, the use language first, which is what we're doing now, and then when we take up actually redrawing the map under Article 15, this is when we will officially offer this amendment. I hope that alleviates a few concerns that people have. Again, we understand the arguments on both sides, but when it's kind of balanced out, this presents an opportunity for Abington to grow its commercial tax base and start to take some of those pressures that we feel when we open up our residential property taxes. It'll help with some of these projects we have coming up, like the fire station, other capital needs, and I just want people to keep that in mind as they're weighing whether or not to vote for this or not.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Any further questions?
Mike?
Yeah, well, that'll be next, please. This one right here.
Hi, my name's Holly Say in 37 Bayberry Road. I have a couple of questions. Actually, it's a three-part question. How much of this is conservation land?
I don't know off the top of my head how much conservation lies between the Hancock Street part to where the Muppet District ends. I know Cushing Pond is there, around where the temple is, and then there's some further conservation land up where Mr. Fiore is doing his project. Just to reiterate, no conservation protections are being affected by this bylaw whatsoever. The protections that are in place today stay in place tomorrow if this gets voted.
How is this going to affect the, the surrounding residents?
So I think the reason we have the 75-feet of frontage and the 2 acres of land is so that we could have small craft cannabis cultivators and productions to create smaller businesses and not have like a national company come in and clear-cut 10 acres and kind of just ram into everything. We're looking to sort of trying to balance our revenues with creating smaller areas up there, just for the marijuana cultivation and production.
I know you say that there's a marijuana production plant going in, in this area, but do you also plan on putting more housing up there, too?
That, this is strictly about marijuana cultivation and production. The people who own the land up there have a right to approach the town to do whatever they want to do in the Muppet District, for what the zoning allows, for what land they have. That's just how it works. There's a different zoning in North Abington, there's a different zoning where the retail stores are allowed, there's different zoning sections all around town, and people who own land are allowed to come and ask the town to do what is allowed in their zoning district.
Have you had anybody come to you and ask you?
No, no, I said again, Mr. Collins knows of somebody who might be interested, but this was a conversation that the town manager and I had back in like November or December, that this might be a good area for it.
So how long?
And that's, that's all I know. Apparently, Mr. Collins knows more, but he is a reporter, so.
How long was this planned?
How long was what planned?
How long was this process planned?
So the conversation the town manager and I had started in November and December, and I think I brought it to the planning board in January, and they sort of discussed it in January, firmed up their decision to move forward with this in February, held a public hearing in March, and now we are here at the town meeting. That's required by all zoning changes. The planning board has to hold a public hearing where everybody can attend, listen to the proposed bylaws, and provide feedback.
Thank you, Mrs. Say. Up over corner there.
How you doing? Bobby Dillon, 764 Hancock Street, Abington. I just was wondering, one, who's going to police this whole district as far as what the businesses are being used for? Is anyone going to make sure they're just growing marijuana? Also, you know, it seems like there's a little bit of a goldmine mentality, like, you know, we want to get in this business and be business-friendly to marijuana, which I fully support as a business. You watered down the restrictions so much just for marijuana, and we end up with a 10 marijuana cult, just hypothetically, 10 marijuana cultivation businesses down off of Chestnut Street and off of Hancock Street. What happens in 10 years when we reach a point of market saturation, and some of these aren't feasible? We don't need 10 because another town's more business-friendly, or they start growing in another state, New Hampshire becomes very friendly, and the federal government changes the stipulations. So what happens when maybe those businesses go out of business? Well, now they're only zoned for marijuana, because only marijuana business can have 75 feet of frontage and 2 acres. So they become a useless piece of property? I mean, there's so many variables that I think that, I think what people really want is some sort of guarantees that it's only going to be a couple of these places, maybe just north of the power lines, because what's stopping a couple of people from looking at each other saying, hey, we got 2 acres and 75 feet, let's put a big marijuana warehouse on Hancock Street? Like, there's really, like, you say, well, they need a community host agreement. What you're saying is, trust us. We, we're going to, I think we need a little more guarantees and just, just trust us. We won't do that. Because I mean, it's like you're making a deal with the devil's lettuce here. It seems like you're enamored with the money, but not our town and the way it feels and how much it's changing. So that's just my concerns.
Okay, so as far as policing, the Cannabis Control Commission has probably the tightest controls in place in this state for anything. I often say if Cannabis Control was running the liquor stores, we probably wouldn't have any liquor stores in town. Their regulations are very, very tight. We can always revisit zoning every year at a town meeting. So in 10 years, if those businesses have gone out, we come back and we look at something else, or we just repeal this district and leave the Muppet Overlay, or we go forward with something else. I mean, we, we hold these public hearings and we have a town meeting, so we get feedback from the people who not only live there, but people who live all over town. The planning board wants to know what you want to do in town. They want your help, and yet nobody comes to our meetings. So, and the other thing would be that anybody who wants to do anything up there would have to come to the site plan, the planning board for site plan review, and you would get notice of that meeting and be invited to attend. Has that helped?
Okay, thank you, Liz.
Yep.
Rich?
Marilyn Broman, 222 Linwood Street. I'd just like to make a statement, and I hope you think about this before casting your vote. We take fresh air for granted. We step outside and take a deep breath of fresh air, and we feel good. Why do we have fresh, clean air? It's our forests. Our forests are the air cleansers. We jeopardize our grandchildren and great-grandchildren when we develop our forested areas. Thinking in the moment to financially profit a few puts future generations in jeopardy. Nature provides us with a fantastic air filtration system. We need to protect it, not develop it. Please vote no on Article 14. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex, please.
Yeah, I'd kind of like to wrap this up. I got one up there, unless it's something that we haven't heard.
Alex Bazantson, 761 Randolph Street. Excuse me. I've spoken to Mr. Fiore, and he does have somebody interested in putting a building in his property. Mr. Fiore would build the building and lease it to this company. I'm in favor of the amendment on the next Article 15 to move the zone to the High Tension wires down to the Brockton Line. I don't think it should be on Hancock. I don't think it should be on that corner of Chestnut Street. To address the water issue, I know a little bit about this. I have some friends in the business who are building 100,000-square-foot building in Winchandon. And the way they do it with their water, they have the initial water trucked in, and between the HVAC system and recapturing the water, they recapture 95% of the water. So according to Mr. Fiore, this company would be doing the same thing, and they'd be putting a well in. So the only water they'd be using is the water that's already been approved for this industrial park, for the buildings that are already approved that Mr. Fiore is building, whether or not cannabis goes in there. These buildings are being built. The land is already cleared, the construction is already started. So we're not going to wipe out the white cedar swamp or the core habitat. This industrial park is being built. It's been approved, and it's being built. So why not let a business in there that's going to give us the most revenue? This business in Winchandon of 100,000 square feet is giving the town of Winchandon $6 million a year. In theory, that could pay for our fire station in five years. There's not another business that can go up there that's going to generate the amount of revenue this is going to generate and the least amount of impact. We could have a bunch of bays up there with plumbers and electricians renting bays and warehouses and have 70 or 80 trucks a day running in and out of there. That's not going to happen with this business. This is the best use for a building up in that location.
Thank you, Alex. Just, I'd like to recognize Terry Mays, because I don't want to hear about it later, so. Go ahead, Terry.
Pat Kearney, 652 Adams, again. I'm sorry, did you want to go first?
Yeah, Jack, I'm sorry, but I'd like, some people haven't been heard at all, so I'd like to go to them first.
Jeanette Cummings, Leary, 395 Randolph Street. I would just be interested in knowing if the Article 11, which references the money we did approve for the Randolph Street Design Transportation Information Plan, we've lived on Randolph Street for over two decades, and nothing's been done to now. It's curious that... and nothing's been done to now. It's curious that this may be happening, and now we're looking at Randolph Street.
There is no connection between, that just, that came up on the tip, and it was time to get that project coming.
Ken Hayes, Scott.
There's no connection between the two articles whatsoever. It just came time to do that project, and it, actually, I think that if we, which we already approved it, that project will, or the $550,000 that we put towards it will make us eligible for the state to actually pay for the construction of it. But one has nothing to do with the other.
Jack, please.
Yeah, Pat Kearney, 652 Adams. Liz, you said the planning board in the, in the studies for this said that there would be no traffic impact, but these facilities will have employees, and they said they're gonna truck in water. Will there be any kind of infrastructure changes, because we all know that intersection at Hancock and Chestnut, you know, with trucks rolling through there, it's gonna become even more dangerous than it is now?
I think, I'm gonna defer, hm, I'm gonna defer to John Stone. I think there's something already in the works for that.
When I said trucking in water, that's the initial trucking in just to charge the system. From that point on, they'll be recapturing the water and using a well.
Okay.
So there's not gonna be truck, there's actually gonna be less traffic with something like this than renting out each individual bay. And there's actually gonna be less water used in the domestic water, toilets and sinks and what have you, in this facility than there would be if he had 20 individual bays rented to plumbers, electricians, or whatever.
Yeah. Go ahead, John.
John? We were able to get the intersection of Hancock and Chestnut on the state's transportation improvement plan for 2026. We'll be putting around about that. So it's state-funded. Alls we had to pay for was the design, similar to the other intersection.
Okay, thank you. Just one more question. Couldn't we impose regulations to require vegetation in front of the building so we don't get caught up in somebody buying 200 feet of frontage and clear cutting straight to their building? I would have to second Mr. Burbine's motion. We should pass this over and get it, get it a little better before we pass it.
Back to that, if we move the zoning district to the high tension wires going down to Brockton, between landlocked land, conservation land that the selectmen has already approved, and conservation has approved, and landlocked land, and there's a strip that belongs to Ames Knoll, there's really not much else that anyone could do up in that area. As a matter of fact, the town, the selectmen have discussed one large parcel abutting Mr. Fiore's property, that we're contacting the owner to see if we can put that into, if we can acquire it, put it into conservation land. There are two lots behind this facility that are in tax taken, I think. There's a couple lots here, so that's not gonna be developed. And there's a small strip that's owned by Chestnut Glen Apartments.
Thank you. Does that answer your question?
Just to follow up, if you look at Section D, Location and Dimensional Controls, Section 3, a 50-foot buffer strip is required.
Chris?
Go ahead.
Michael Sullivan, 79 Walker Lane. I have to admit, I'm more confused at this stage than I was when we first started this discussion. And I have a few questions. First, are we talking about one particular person's parcel of land? That's why we're doing this? A Mr. Diore, who has land that he's already developing commercially, and he has an interest in having marijuana manufacturing facilities? That's question number one. Question number two, what's the, based on the proposed zoning that we're asking to approve tonight, kind of on the fly, what's the maximum size building that can be squeezed on a two-acre lot? And I know we talked about water several times. It's still unclear to me. I assume that whoever goes there would have a right at some point in time to tap into municipal water, the town water system. And I don't know anything about recapturing water in terms of a marijuana manufacturing facility, but it seems to me that there's, has to be a fair amount of water that has to be utilized to grow marijuana. So that water has to come from someplace. And, you know, Mr. Bazantson, I'm sure you've done more research in this than I am, but 98% of the water is gonna be recaptured?
Yes, up to 98%.
That sounds a little bit extreme.
Do your research. I have, I've done the research.
Are we talking about one person's parcel of land that we're trying to do a rezoning for? And what's the maximum size building that they can squeeze on a two-acre lot?
I don't know what they could squeeze on a two-acre lot. All I know is that potentially, anyone that owns that land on Chestnut Street, the landlocked area or the frontage, they could make a deal with someone, buy that, buy the frontage, and it's not landlocked anymore. So, I mean, those things can happen, and you know that, that that can happen with land. I mean, we're talking acres upon acres between the high tension wires and down to Chestnut Glen. So, yes, there could be other facilities. What I said is that I'm aware of 100,000 square-foot facility going in Winchandon, and that facility will recapture up to 98% of the water between the HVAC and just recapturing the water and replenishing it with the HVAC condensation. That's how it works. And, you know, we're not inventing this. This is going on all throughout the country. You know, the people that put up this, this size building probably gonna make a 20 or 30 million dollar investment in this. This isn't a bunch of tire kickers that are gonna be out of business in two years. So.
Well, my only other point is, early on, it was suggested we should rush this through because Whitman may be taking this up on their own town, their own town meeting. I don't think we should feel compelled to do this because an abutting community might do it. The fact of the matter is, if this is a good thing to do, a little bit more time to have all the correct information would be very helpful.
Well, I think the planning board-
And if somebody wants to cite a manufacturing facility there a year from now, they'd likely cite a manufacturing facility there a year from now. I think this is changing on the fly. We don't have all the information that we need to make a fully informed decision. And it appears like there's one person in particular that we're trying to benefit with regards to this rezoning.
Yeah, I think we're trying to benefit the town.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Burbine, and I would, if this would be the last comment, please. I truly believe everybody has enough information to make up their mind properly, so. We need to bring it to a vote, or accept a motion to move the question, either way.
I'm not gonna move the question, but Andy Burbine, 30, Lantern Lane. Correct me if I'm wrong, Liz, or members of the planning board, but we have a marijuana overlay district now, which includes up north on Route 18, correct, and Route 58?
Yeah.
The way that I read the overlay district, it includes cultivation. So if somebody wanted to establish a cultivation facility, they could do that in that district now.
They certainly could, but we want to do a marijuana-
You answered my question, thank you.
And cultivation.
You answered my question, thank you.
Hold on, let's not, let's, go ahead. Mr. Burbine.
I asked her, I asked her, and she answered the question. So my point is, if we have a cultivation district now, why don't we leave the cultivation district where it is? As Mr. Sullivan said, why don't we do a little more work on this and maybe bring it back next year with a little bit more specificity and a little bit more thought? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I just quickly want to answer Mr. Sullivan's question, which is the underlying, Mr. Sullivan? Mr. Sullivan? I just wanted to answer your question about the floor area for the buildings. It's all in the underlying zoning in the Muppet District. So that's in our zoning bylaw, and you can feel free to get that on our website when you have an opportunity.
Okay. Yes, last one, please.
Thank you. Jane Matiosis, 48 Now Street. I just am concerned, I mean, I think what Mr. Burbine said about Route 18 is good, but I have another, another one. We're all, like, individuals can grow their own. So I don't see how this is gonna be so important, because more and more people are growing. You know? It's sort of like, give me a minute. It's sort of like having a free nail salon, or you can go and pay for one. Everybody's gonna go to the free. Or, please, give me a minute, go to a farm stand or grow your own vegetables. I mean, you have to consider that fact, too. But also, I don't think this should be rushed. I think more time invested in looking at this is important. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, I just want to respond to the, not everybody has the ability to, to grow marijuana wherever they live. So that's why sometimes, and it's a benefit to the town.
Go ahead, Terry. You've been raising your hand all night, I know that.
Hi, Terry Mays, 1020 Hancock Street. I'd like to second what Andy suggested, that we give it a little more time, because there is a lot of information, as mentioned earlier, in this article, and we've had a lot of ups and downs in the discussion tonight. So I think we all have a good base to work with when this question is brought back. So I'd like to see this passed over.
So you're making a motion to pass over? I assume. That, Greg, you help me out with this. There's certain articles that come before the town meeting, and if they're voted down, they have to wait like two or three years before they can bring it back up again. If I heard the residents correctly tonight, they wouldn't mind seeing it, but maybe a little bit more information, and it might even pass tonight, I don't know. But would it be better to bring it to a vote, two-thirds, if it is that different? Then would we be better off to pass over it?
Thank you through you, Mr. Moderator. So, under Chapter 40A of the general laws with respect to amending zoning bylaws, if a zoning bylaw is brought before a town meeting, and there is a negative determination, then that same exact bylaw cannot be brought back for a period of two years unless the planning board gives that bylaw a positive recommendation after a public hearing. The only thing in my experience that does not count as a negative determination would be a motion to refer the matter back to the planning board for further study. Otherwise, whether you vote, vote no on this, or vote to pass it over, that would likely be considered a negative determination, which means, which means you'd either have to wait two years or have a proposal that gets a positive recommendation from the planning board before bringing it back.
Okay, you follow that? I believe the best thing for us to do, and we do have a motion to pass over, that will be a 50 vote. If we go for the recommendation to change the bylaw, that's a two-thirds vote. So if you, if we go to pass over, which I'm gonna ask the members, but, you know, if they'd like to pass over, all we need is more than 50% of the people, and it'll be beaten. If we go the other way, we're gonna need two-thirds. So, all in favor, everybody in favor are passing over the article? Yes. Oh, no, I'm not gonna recognize him.
Through the moderator to Town Council. Just procedurally, I think we have to take the vote first on the planning board's motion to approve the article. If the two-thirds doesn't go, it doesn't pass.
That's fine.
If Town Council disagrees with me, I'm all for it, but I just want to make sure we're doing this procedurally correct. I don't think we've heard a motion to refer it to the planning board for further study.
We have not heard that motion, Sean, but I, we certainly heard from a couple people to pass over.
Yes, and no doubt. I just, it's, procedurally, we usually go with the main motion, and if it fails, it automatically is passed over. If it doesn't, it gets to two-thirds.
It's one way to look at it, yes, but if we go-
You're the moderator, you decide.
Well, if you go to pass over and it doesn't pass, you know, if it doesn't get a positive vote, it's done anyways. Right?
Mr. Attorney Corbo, would it be appropriate if someone made a motion to refer it to the planning board? Would that be the first motion to be acted upon? No, I recused myself as moderator. No. Mr. Moderator.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we should get the thing right here. I have a ten, that's my, I want to do what's right for the people. I want to do what's right for the town. And in my mind, right now, the right thing to do would be entertain the motion to pass over. And I'm relying on Town's attorney to say if that's all right. Okay? All right. So. Yeah, Bo, and you're right, but it was made early on in the debate to pass over, and I said, let it go. And then it was also somebody, I couldn't tell you who, but, if you don't have to, okay? All right, listen. And I'm not gonna argue anymore. If you want to make that motion, sir, you're kind, you can do it. If you want to make that motion, you're welcome to do it. Name an address.
Hi, Gary Coe, 22 Brookfield Road. I would like to make a motion that we pass it back to the planning board.
Okay. Everybody understand that?
That way, it can come back up.
Yep, that's fine. Fine. The gentleman made a motion to refer it back to the planning board for further study. I, you know what? I'm not gonna argue, all right? I'm not gonna sit here and debate back and forth. I understand that, but I'm trying to do what's right for the town, sir. I'm trying to do what I think is the right motion for us to hear right now. We had three different ones. Finally, somebody stood up and made a formal motion. It was a formal motion, because typically, people used to get up and give an elegant speech on why we shouldn't do something, and at the end of their speaking to the town meeting, they'd say, and I want to vote, I want to move the question, which really wasn't fair. But that happened for years. So now we ask for somebody to stand up and make the motion, like this gentleman did. He didn't speak on it? I'd ask the town's attorney to answer that question. I had a conversation with him, and that.
Thank you through you, Mr. Moderator. So, the effect of a, a motion to refer the matter back to the planning board means that the matter is not voted on here tonight, and instead, the planning board has an opportunity to conduct further study and decide whether or not to bring the matter back at a future town meeting. But for purposes of this town meeting, the motion to refer it back to the planning board ends the discussion, and there is no vote. It is essentially a no vote, because it cannot be approved at this meeting.
Did everybody follow that, all right? Yes. Yes. Okay. Yes. Mike, I realize that was, but it was also made in a point where somebody was speaking either favorably or against it. It was made, that we don't usually accept that now. We don't accept that now. It used to be done years ago. You could get up and make your plea, and then by the town, you wouldn't give anybody else a chance to talk, you'd say, I move the question. Okay? That wasn't done tonight. This gentleman just did, in my mind, the right way to do it was to refer it back to the planning board. I don't know what the difference would be. I don't know why we were arguing. One way, it's gonna get defeated, if he doesn't go to the planning board, then we'll try it for the two-thirds vote. Will you remember the House of Representatives, because I see how they act? Yes, I will. Town Council, please. Right. All right. Look, one, one way or the other, we're talking about moving the question or referring it back is a 50% vote. Okay, that's fine. Going forward to change the zoning article is a two-thirds vote. So it's much simpler, and we all want to get out of here. You certainly don't want to stand there and listen to me anymore. So, go ahead, Greg, I'm sorry. So, go ahead, Greg, I'm sorry.
Thank you through you again, Mr. Moderator. So, I'm sitting here observing this the same way all of you are, and maybe some people interpreted this differently, but when I heard Mr. Burbine speak, I heard him say something along the lines of, I would suggest that this be passed over. I did not hear that as a motion. I did not hear a second on that motion. Later, when the woman in, in the back somewhere said, you know, I would also support that, again, I didn't hear it as a motion. So in, in my opinion, the only motions that have been put forward on the table were the original motion of the planning board to approve the article, and then a subsequent motion to refer it back to the planning board. As a matter of parliamentary procedure, the motion to refer it back to the planning board takes precedence over the original motion. If that motion to refer it back does not pass, then someone can either make a subsequent procedural motion, such as to pass it over, or the original motion would come back onto the table. So at this point, Mr. Moderator, my recommendation would be to put the motion to refer this back to the planning board to a vote to the body.
Okay, is everybody okay with that? All right, so, right now, I'm going to ask the membership to support, I'm going to ask if you want to refer it back to the planning board. A yes vote would report it back to the planning board, a no vote would not. Okay, everybody okay with that? All right, all those in favor of referring this back to the planning board kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
You know, if you could just show a hands, please, and help me out a little bit, otherwise we're going to have to count. All those in favor of putting it back to the planning board kindly raise your hand. All those opposed? No help. Would you count, please? I, I forget who we appointed as counters. So all those in favor of referring it back to the planning board, would you kindly stand? Who else? What else? Rich? Is that everybody? Four counters? Okay, please sit. All those opposed who pass it back to the planning board, please stand and remain standing until you're counted. Six? Eleven? Okay. I have 98 in favor of passing it back to the planning board and 47, no, do not. So it does not pass. Okay. What is it? 98. To pass, I mean, you're right, I'm sorry, Greg. 98 in favor of passing it back to the planning board.
Motion passes.
So what?
My, the motion passes.
Okay. Yep. No, I know, I said that wrong. The motion is to pass it back to the planning board. Everybody clear on that? Okay, so we'll move along. To 15, which is moot now, that would be, so we actually create the district. The only thing I got to say is, probably a lot of hippies are not going to be employed because of that, but... So Article 16.
15.
To see if the town will vote to...
15.
Okay, I'm sorry, 15 is to create the district, and because that article just did not pass, it's, we can't do that. So we're going to pass over Article, no?
No, no, no.
Okay, go ahead.
The finance committee recommends, defers to the planning board on Article 15.
And the planning board moves to refer Article 15 back to the planning board.
Okay, having heard the motion from Mrs. Shea, all in favor of the motion kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, Mrs. Shea.
You're welcome.
Article 16 is to see if the town will vote to amend Section 175-6666D of the Town of Abington zoning bylaws as follows, with additions of the underlining and definitions in it. Establish businesses and industrial properties actively engaged in businesses at the time of the acceptance of the bylaw shall not be required to provide a buffer zone connection until such a, such a building or a lot itself is expanded or enlarged. And then there's a cross out, and I apologize, my eyes are failing me, so if I'm not sure, I am not sure. So, Liz.
The, the finance committee defers to the planning board to make a motion on Article 16.
This article is intended to update Section 175-666D of our zoning bylaw in order to clarify and confirm when an existing commercial or industrial business must plant or install a suitable buffer between its property and any abutting residential property or residential zoning district, such as a solid fence or double row of evergreens. The current wording is somewhat vague, and it could be argued that such a buffer needs only to be added if an existing commercial building is expanded or altered. This article proposes new wording to confirm that if a business expands or enlarges a commercial building or expands the size of the commercial lot itself, then the business must also include and install a suitable buffer for the benefit of any abutting residential property. The planning board moves to approve Article 16 as printed in the warrant.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Shea or the planning board? If not, if not, all in favor of Mrs. Shea's motion? Yes? Okay, go ahead.
Just one question, Liz. Does that include lot coverage, expanding the lot coverage? Or does that include expanding the lot itself?
It's expanding the lot itself, I believe. This was based on things, a couple of things that happened in town where one property purchased another property and expanded the business but didn't put, and put in a buffer zone.
Gotcha, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any further questions? If not, all in favor of Mrs. Shea's motion kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That's unanimous. Article 17 is a street acceptance. To see if the town will vote to accept as, as a townway, the roadways known as Dorsey Street, Cynthia Road, and Murphy Street, and is hereby laid out by the Board of Selectmen as such roadways are shown on the roadway acceptance place plan dated 11/17/2022 and passed by Outback Engineering, included, and followed by the Town Clerk, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to accept as a gift purchase or eminent domain the roadway easements and the roadway together with all regulated damaged utilities and easements, and make any other action thereto. Mrs. Shea?
The finance committee defers to the planning board to make a motion on Article 17.
Okay, I'm going to ask everybody's indulgent for literally two seconds. I would like to take a moment to recognize Wayne Smith, the planning board chairman, and the years of public service that he has given to the town. Wayne has served on the planning board for 48 years, and is chairman for over 20 years, and he's chosen not to run again this year. You may have purchased a hamburger or a hot dog from Wayne as the chief chef of the Lions Club Grill. Wayne was instrumental in facilitating the town's purchase of the Crystal Land, now part of the town's open space and forest lands, as we've heard about tonight. Wayne has given countless hours of his time to this community. His service to the town and his volunteerism on many other boards and committees are the definition of a true public servant, and he will be missed. Thank God he won't be my boss anymore. This is the final vote needed to be taken according to our town's roadway acceptance procedures. The three new roads listed in this article have been inspected by the town's consulting engineer, and the asphalt engineering plans have been reviewed and approved. The three roadways have been constructed in accordance with requirements and specifications of the Town of Abington. The planning board moves to approve Article 17 as printed in the warrant.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea. Anything further be said about the motion Mrs. Shea made? If not, all in favor kindly signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it's unanimous, and thank God that Sean has returned.
Thank you, and again, thank you to Wayne Smith for all of your service, for the vast, many decades, the things you've done for the town through the planning board, through the Lions Club, and all the other things you're involved with. We greatly appreciate you. You've been an icon in this community. We thank you. Article 18. Before we move to Article 18, the last 18, last article, I will remind you that we have these bags for you to take home, if you'd like to take as many if you want, there are also additional COVID tests, all free of charge. Take as many as you'd like, take home and share with your friends and neighbors and family. Article 18 is the funding of the collective bargaining agreement to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and transfer from available funds a sum of money to fund and implement the first year of the following collective bargaining agreements. I'm sorry we lost the projection, projection screen, but Mr. Sala will read a motion.
The finance committee moves that the sum of $14,790.87 be raised and appropriated to fund and implement the first year of the CBA with the Abington Library Staff Association Local 4928, and further that the sum of $10,999.40 be raised and appropriated to fund and implement the first year of the CBA with the Abington Clerical Employees PLU 1139, and further that the sum of $11,743.22 be raised and appropriated and implement the first year of the collecting, collective bargaining agreement with the Abington Managers Association.
Mr. Sala makes a motion to approve three out of the four contracts with the amounts that were stated. It's my understanding the police contract has not yet been finalized, and that's the reason that it was omitted from his motion. Is there anything be heard, or any questions in Article 18? If not, all is in favor of Article 18, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. It's unanimous. We were going to have a screen up here to remind people that, the residents, that there are town elections on April 30th at the Beaverbrook Elementary School from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. We also have celebrating Abington's 300th birthday on the weekend of June 10th, 11th, and 12th. Weather permitting, we'll have a great fireworks show on that Saturday night, the 11th. A lot of information available on their website. The summer concerts start on July 10th. Again, if you're making donations, it would be greatly appreciated. And the new and improved Beaverbrook Playground will soon be breaking ground. If you'd like to support that project, there's a lot of information online, and also might be some people out in the lobby. We'd like to thank you for attending and taking part in our special annual town meetings, the time being 9:34. We would like to declare the annual town meeting of April 4th, 2022, now adjourned. Thank you.